All right, I'd like to reconvene the meeting for the St. Mary's County Board of Education for Wednesday, February 23rd, 2022. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move approval of the agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion is carried. We will begin with board reports, and Judy, you are first on the list.
All right. Good evening. My board report will be briefed tonight. The Superintendent Student Leadership Advisory Council's Steering Committee, consisting of students from all three high schools, is currently planning a presentation for Rising Freshman Night. We'll be giving a presentation at Chopticon, Great Mills, and Leonardtown about the expectations versus reality of high school. Contrary to movies, students do not get shoved in lockers or eat in bathrooms, as well as some advice and tips for success in high school. I'm also pleased to announce that my successor has been elected. Monisa Isuara, a current junior from Leonardson High School, has been elected to be the next SMCPS student member of the Board of Education. I've worked with her closely throughout all of high school, and I have complete faith in her to get the job done. As much as I wish I could stay on the board forever, I'm off to college in the fall, so you'll not be seeing me until I graduate. So, thank you.
Rita?
Okay, so I attended the 62nd Annual St. Mary's County Science and Engineering Fair. So it was mostly middle school students that presented their projects. These are students that are not in the STEM program in middle school or elementary. It was some very unique projects that I went through and saw. One was on solar. There was another one that I really enjoyed was the person did a study when the, were you fallen line as a sibling? You know, were you the first child, middle, or last? And then she did a study to find out like as far as grades and, you know, things like that. Who was, she wanted to see who was the smarter of the siblings. Her study showed the middle child, which of course she was. But it was some very unique projects, and I think all the people that volunteered, I think there was four mentors for that and judges for these projects, and I thank them for taking their volunteer and their time to do that, so.
All right, let's see. My report will be very quick. Good luck to all of our winter sports teams as they strive for their SMAC championships, and then as they begin their various runs for state titles, perhaps, fingers crossed. Let's see. I sit on the May Board of Directors, which is the consortium of all of the boards within the state of Maryland. So we had a Board of Directors meeting today. We obviously had an update, even though most of us watched the state board meeting yesterday. We discussed upcoming legislation that is now before the various committees in the House and the Senate, and had just various updates on where we are with all of that. Just going to remind everyone, all, I know the BECA scholarships closed last Friday, so good luck to all of our seniors who applied for those. The delegate and senatorial scholarships for our three St. Mary's County representatives, four, including across the, we have a split with Calvert, are still open. So please, if you are attending a Maryland school or a trade school, it is not just a four-year straight college or associate's degree, please consider applying. The amount of money that's supposedly being passed out, you know, for scholarships this year is greater due to the budget surplus in Maryland, so do not let that opportunity pass you by if, you know, if you're interested. So, and all of the career centers at each of the three high schools all have information on how to apply, and it's not difficult. It's a couple of questions, and you're good to go. So, please, please apply, so.
Good evening, everyone. I hope you had a wonderful Valentine's Day. My report will be short as well. I have several congratulations. I want to congratulate the 2021-2022 SMCPS nominees for great work, service, and dedication in each of our schools and offices. The employee categories were educational support professionals, outstanding educators, and leaders of excellence. And from that group of brilliant employees, finalists were determined. And congratulations to all the finalists, and congratulations to the nominees and the finalists. Also, congratulations to the first combined color guard percussion ensemble of Great Mills, Chopticon, and Leonardtown. Thanks to the students, parents, and music directors, they performed at Frederick Maryland at the Governor Thomas Johnson High School. Congratulations to them. Thank you.
I was part of a leadership meeting this morning on the, for the council for the advancement of school-based health centers. We are very fortunate that our chief health officer, Dr. Brewster, had the foresight to bring two school-based health centers to St. Mary's County and was able to do so with grant funding that has been available. And they will have an exciting announcement coming up with respect to some new things going on, but there's a school-based health center at Spring Ridge Middle School and one at Margaret Brent Middle School, two areas that are underserved with respect to access to good medical care and mental health care. And these two clinics are hoped to be able to provide that to more students and to other individuals as appropriate. And I guess let me also just say, with respect to the scholarships, I believe that if an individual is intent on attending an out-of-state school that offers a program that is not offered at a Maryland school, that those individuals are also eligible for the scholarships from the legislature, so.
Yes, and there is a bill before now to tighten that process up. So if it's an accredited program at an out-of-state school, and you don't offer the similar accredited program, then you're still eligible. So, yeah. It's better to apply, and you can always say no.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. Well, I'm glad that the determinant was that the middle child is the smartest or highest.
Yeah.
As a middle child, I have to say, that's the truth. Although part of my grades didn't reflect it, you know, later on.
I don't have a lot of slides today, thankfully, because we have national board certified teachers and renewals to recognize returning students who, from TAM, who are going to join us fantastically and are wonderful student artists. So there's been a lot of discussion about masks, and vaccinations, and vaccination rates, and where we all are. And in St. Mary's County, certainly we've done a very good job with the older people, the most vulnerable, the most susceptible to the risks presented by COVID-19. And across the distribution, you can see that we're about half of our kids, 12 to 17, about one out of four of our children, five through 11. Most importantly, for St. Mary's County public schools, about 89% of our teachers are vaccinated and/or boosted. About 79% of the entire staff is fully vaccinated, support staff as well. So, thank you for all of them for making the decision to keep themselves as safe as they possibly can. As a result of the decisions that people have made, and generally how we've been operating in St. Mary's County, we certainly saw a very, very busy time in December, and in January, and pretty much through this entire month of February, but we've seen steep declines as of late. The two graphs show it by age, and then the second shows by vaccination status. Certainly, the second demonstrates that vaccination is, the unvaccinated are the ones who are carrying the largest load of new cases in St. Mary's County. So there's a great deal of evidence to demonstrate that that's the best way to keep yourself safe, so I strongly encourage, as we have always said so, get vaccinated. In St. Mary's County public schools, we keep our own data where we keep track. Parents contact us if their children have tested positive, either through an at-home test, or a test in a doctor's office, or a drive-through test, or a PCR test, but they inform us. It goes onto our account. All of our staff, if they are under the care of a doctor, or they have a test, they contact us. We went from having hundreds of cases per week down to, last week, about 43 cases, and so far this week, four. That's four children out of 17,500 children have tested positive for COVID-19 so far this week, and we have had two staff members out of over 2,000 employees. So, we definitely see numbers trending in the right direction, and that aligns very well with what happened yesterday at the State Board of Ed. The State Board of Ed, they voted, I think 12 to 2, to rescind, well, actually, they have to make their request to rescind the law, COMAR 13A.01.07, face coverings in school facilities that mandates that every single person, regardless of vaccination status, will be required to wear a mask in a school or school-related facility. So the State Board voted yesterday to request to rescind the law to the legislative body, the AELR, the Administrative and Executive Legislative Review Committee, is made up of 20 elected officials, 10 delegates, and 10 senators, who are nominated for the committee by the Chair of the House and the Senate. And they have fast-tracked a meeting for Friday at 2:30 PM, where they will consider whether or not to uphold the decision and the request to rescind the mask mandate. Ultimately, they're the ones who put the force of law behind COMAR 13A.01.07, and so they're the only body who then can repeal it. So, we are all waiting for Wednesday at 2:30, or for Friday at 2:30. We shall all be tuning in to hear what the decision that's made. Once they have met, and they approve or disapprove, I mean, we don't know how these 20 people will vote or move forward, we will then move forward in our decision-making. We have received a great many emails from community members, from parents, even from students, with their opinions on masking, and we thank everybody for taking the time to present their opinions and their thoughts and their perspectives. We will tell you that based on all the evidence that we have, based on the data that has been provided to us, based on the availability of vaccination widely to everybody in St. Mary's County, based on our vaccination clinics that we ran in our schools, in our parking lots, in our elementary schools, based on all of the opportunity that was put forth for somebody, anyone who wanted to get vaccinated, it's time to move forward. So, pending AELR approval of rescinding COMAR 13A.07, if they do indeed approve it's being rescinded, we will then be moving, whatever that timeline might be, to moving to a status of masking recommended for individuals not fully vaccinated. Not required, but recommended. We are not moving off of our deeply-held belief that being vaccinated protects you and others as much as it possibly can. St. Mary's County will continue to provide medical-grade masks for students to include KN95 and N95 options. We have thousands of them, so we will be moving to making those available at request. We will send a letter to all students, staff, and families as soon as AELR makes the decision, provides a timeline, and so we'll send it out to everybody with all the information and accessing links and things such as that. Hopefully, that will happen late in the day on Friday. But again, this is not our timeline. This is not our decision. This is not, this is your government, your elected officials. So, March should be interesting. Whenever that AELR gets together, whatever date they provide, it is very important to recognize that aside from all of the things that draw people out, such as masking and things such as this, we do have the traditional work of the school system. And on Tuesday, March 1st, we have the Commissioners of St. Mary's County, the Budget Work Session, where they are going to entertain our request for funding, because we can't really provide what, the wonderful resources that we provide unless we're appropriately funded. So we encourage everybody to come out, and please take the same level of interest in the county and the funding process and the budget process as we do perhaps for all other things. We have a budget meeting on Wednesday, or a budget meeting on Wednesday, the 9th during the day, and the 23rd in the evening. And, believe it or not, in four short weeks, we will end the third marking period with an early dismissal day. So with that, that concludes my remarks. I'm sure that we will be communicating with many people over the next several days. For all those who keep on sharing via email, please know that our responses are going to be predicated on when we have more information, and we can share it more explicitly with those people coming forth. So, with that, I thank you very much for your time and attention.
Let's see. Dr. Marr, our National Board Certifications.
Thank you. Tonight, I am pleased to recognize exemplary teachers who have gone above and beyond expectations. The National Board of Professional Teaching Standards was established as the profession's vehicle for defining and recognizing high standards of teaching. The process is an extensive one, involving performance-based assessments, including teacher portfolios, student work samples, videos, thorough analysis of the candidate's classroom teaching, and student learning. This certification is a demonstration of teaching practice as measured against these high and rigorous standards. Offered on a voluntary basis, the advanced system of National Board Certification complements, but does not replace, state licensing. Recognized as the gold standard in teacher certification, only 3% of teachers nationwide currently have earned this certification. In the blueprint for Maryland's futures, incentives are provided for teachers to earn this prestigious certification, and we are thrilled to celebrate those in our system who have done so. 37 teachers have earned it, or about 4% of our teaching staff. Tonight, we add to those ranks. MSDE, St. Mary's County Public Schools, and I want to give special thanks to Ms. Colleen Gill and Dr. Beth Beasley, who provide support throughout the process as this cadre works their way through. So without further ado, I would like to recognize the National Board Certified Teachers who have earned it this term. These teachers are joining us, and first, I'd like to recognize the following teachers who have earned this accomplishment, having achieved this National Board Certification. Leslie Dreschler from Evergreen Elementary School.
Thank you.
Come on up.
Dr. Smith, if you'd join me, please. Dr. Smith.
I feel like we've done this before.
Let me be the lady.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
It's so wonderful. This is difficult. Thank you.
Stand right here, and turn around, and do like this.
And Robert Matera from Captain Walter Francis Dukes.
Thank you very much.
And we have also three teachers who have renewed and recertified, having to go through this process once again, to continue their National Board status. Kristy Collins from Chopticon High School.
Beth Dyson from Leonardtown High School.
And Kim Jordan from Hollywood Elementary School.
Dr. Smith, if you want to... If you stick around after we've recognized everybody, we can also do more pictures. To say it's the gold standard, it gets used quite often, but if you want to know what's right in the world, if you want to know what really is sowing the hope for the future, it is fantastic, dedicated, professional educators. And to achieve National Board Certification is awesome, and to renew it says you are committed to your profession, and your kids, and the community you serve, and you've got the cutest little next generation right there. So please, become a teacher. What a wonderful group. Thank you so much. All right, yes. Beautiful. That was fantastic. Thank you.
Okay, next up is Mrs. Bachner with Teacher Academy of Maryland.
Oh, there she is.
Always in the mix.
Yes, right in the middle of it.
This evening, I proudly share with the system recognition of our Teacher Academy of Maryland program and participants. At this time, I would like to invite with me Mrs. Chu, Ms. Berry, and Ms. Johnson to join me at the podium for this recognition. St. Mary's joined the Teacher Academy of Maryland in 2014-15 in each of the three high schools. In 2016-17, the program moved to the Dr. James A. Forrest Career and Technology Center as a two-year completer pathway program. At this time, Melissa Chu was appointed as the teacher to lead this pathway program. Year one of the TAM program consists of two courses or two class periods, which are Human Growth and Development Through Adolescence and Teaching as a Profession. Year two of the TAM program consists of three class periods. The course taught during year two is Foundations of Curriculum and Instruction, and students also participate in an Education Academy internship. For the first semester of the internship, students are paired with a St. Mary's County Public School mentor teacher in their area of interest, and spend one day a week for two months, and then two days a week for two months in their classrooms. For the second semester, students spend four days a week in their classrooms, creating and teaching lessons, creating bulletin boards, providing one-on-one tutoring, running small group pullouts, and essentially becoming a second teacher in the classroom. TAM students also have additional opportunities such as obtaining certifications such as the Paraprotest, First Aid, and CPR. Out of this year, 17 TAM students that took the Paraprotest, 16 left with passing scores. Yeah. TAM students also participate in conferences and competitions at local, state, and the national level for Educators Rising, a nationally-recognized educational student organization. They are invited to college visits and have opportunities to earn college credits and/or scholarships when going on to major in education at Maryland University, sub-partner with the TAM program. The first cohort that completed the program was in May of 2017. It was comprised of seven students. The second cohort was 13 students, and over half of them are currently working toward a career in education. Five cohorts later, 70% of the program completers go on to pursue a career in education. Former TAM completers are now summer school teachers and aides, youth leaders, community college education majors, and four-year university education students. This school year, St. Mary's County Public Schools has hired our first TAM completer teachers. Tonight, we are pleased to introduce and recognize these two teachers. They are Ms. Rebecca Johnson, who is teaching 4th grade at the Chesapeake Public Charter School, and Ms. Ashley Berry, who is teaching Special Education at Green Holly Elementary School. Ms. Johnson and Ms. Berry, on behalf of the TAM program and St. Mary's County Public Schools, we want to thank you for coming back and working for us with our students in St. Mary's County Public Schools. Please continue to help us instill the love of teaching in our students, so they will want to become, like you, teachers for St. Mary's County Public Schools. At this time, Dr. Smith, I invite you up, as well as, I believe, Ms. Chu, we have the TAM current, some TAM current students in the audience, right? If you are a current TAM student, if you would join us, that would be wonderful.
So you see, thank you for joining, thank you for starting, thank you for joining us. You see where you can indeed end up as a National Board Certified Teacher with St. Mary's County Public Schools. Please stay with it. We desperately need the light that is the people, the young people in the TAM program. It really is, I'm going to look forward to, actually, I'm doing observations, correct, this year?
Yeah, next month.
Yeah, so I've gone in and done observation of the TAM students in classrooms, and I have to tell you, they are impressive. They are as impressive as those working through a more traditional program in a four-year college or institution. So, thank you very much for all that you're doing. Please stay with us for, you know, 31 years. You're at...
21, 22.
And I remember when she was a student, so absolutely, we make, we do, we really do. We make our own, and this has been your home, and may it stay your home for the next 20 or 30 years. But that's really exciting. That's not a daunting thing. We got a picture of...
Yes, and their principals are here too, Ms. Beth Ramsey and Ms. Ann Tundra, if they could come up.
Yeah, we want to have, let's get all the principals in here, everybody. Come on. What exceptional choosing you have done. Oh, my goodness.
Hands off, principal.
No, no, no.
Tighten up just a little bit.
Push it. Bunch of plain grapes.
Make sure you're smiling.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you so much.
Are you just going to stay there?
I'm going to kind of loiter.
Okay, Mr. Burrows with...
Mr. Burrow.
Our art gallery students, artists, sorry.
Do you have your clicker, Dr. Smith?
Oh, yeah, please.
Well, good evening, everyone. It's good to see everyone. All right, so tonight, we are here once again to recognize some of our outstanding young artists. We'll be celebrating student artwork that appeared in this year's second quarter Superintendent's Art Gallery. For the gallery, each quarter, student artwork is selected to be displayed in the Board of Education meeting room and in the hallway leading to Dr. Smith's office. The arts and engagement in the creative process provides our students with a safe emotional outlet that allows them to express and celebrate who they are. As I've said many times, we are incredibly fortunate that Dr. Smith and our incredible Board of Education members are strong advocates for our arts programs. Through your support, we are able to continue programs such as the one we are celebrating here tonight. Students, when I call your name, please come forward to receive your certificate, and then we will ask for you to remain. At the end of the recognitions, there will be opportunities for individual and group photos. Please note, the school listed on the artwork denotes the school in which the artwork was created. So without further ado, let's celebrate our students. First, from the Dr. James A. Forrest Career and Technology Center, with the work Glitched, Mackenzie Berry. I don't believe this artist is in attendance this evening, but from Mechanicsville Elementary School with the piece Printmaking, Lila Eskins. And we do thank Principal Lynch for attending. Thank you, Mr. Lynch. I also believe this artist is not in attendance, but we would like to thank Dr. Zimmerman, Dr. Zimmerman, excuse me, the principal, and Ms. Griffiths, the art teacher, for attending this evening. Thank you so much. From Spring Ridge Middle School with the piece Positive Negative Watercolor Leaves, Ivy Madei. From Ridge Elementary School with the piece Abstract Shape Art, Brian Nelson. I'd like to also thank Principal Vitaleka for attending this evening. Thank you so much. And also as a plug for our own coming back home to teach, Ms. Nelson is the choral director at Great Mills High School, so she's back there. From Park Hall Elementary School with the piece Colorful Castle, Riley Goolsbee. From Park Hall Elementary School with the piece Colorful Castle, Riley Goolsbee. And from Great Mills High School with the piece Beauty in the Eye of the Beholder, Sophia Womack. And thank you to our art teacher, Ms. Bowen, for attending. Thank you, Ms. Bowen. So, once again, congratulations to all of our student artists.
Before we take a break and do some great pictures, thank you very much for your expression, for your inspiration. Please understand that this is what really dresses this room and gives us something wonderful to look at. We need you to keep sharing yourself through your art, and, you know what a wonderful thing is to do? Is ultimately go to school in the TAM program and then go off to school and become a fantastic art teacher and have, I mean, what a, just, I'm just saying, keep it in mind. Thank you very much.
We're gonna give a maximum ten-minute break so everyone can take pictures. You guys can come up in, with your families up against the photos, and we're good to go.
Great, awesome. Do you just come grab your artwork, please? Now that it is a little, they are a little heavy.
Back in together?
Yes.
All right, so we're going to reconvene and move forward. Let's see, today we do have a public hearing on policy IKC with Mrs. Bachner and Dr. Jaffers. Do we have any speakers for the public hearing?
No.
Okay, so with that, we will now close the public hearing. Next, we have public comment, and do we have any speakers for public comment?
Yes.
Okay, so Jay, if you call the first name, and I have to read the statement, that person can make their way to the podium up here, and we can start when I'm finished.
Mark Pinkel.
Okay, so this will apply to all, no, no, you can come up here, in the meantime, it just saves, saves time.
Sure.
So, "The Board welcomes public input on policies and issues affecting our schools. We take this time to listen and consider but not comment. This is not the appropriate forum for negative comments or criticisms of individual staff or students. Any concerns about those should be taken to the level closest to the situation and then directed on to the superintendent." Let's see, "We also sit as an appellate body in both student-employee appeals, so please keep this in mind and do not provide any comment on a case that might come before us." Let's see, speakers must sign at the beginning of the meeting, which obviously you guys have done, and public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker, and you may not yield your time to someone else. And if you have written comments, if you would like to give them to Jay, then he can include them in the minutes for the meeting, so.
Well, I don't, I don't, I don't intend to break any rules, so if I do, you can, you can let me know, so. Hello, my name is Mark Pinkel. I'm a parent, a local business owner, a volunteer for Leonardtown High School Soccer, and a board member for the Foundation for Heroes, and a community volunteer. But I'm here solely tonight as a concerned parent, not just for my child, but for the children of our community with special needs. My daughter, Leighton, is five years old, kindergarten, with an IEP at Hollywood Elementary School. She has been diagnosed with severe speech disorder and onosphagxia, in addition to having developmental delays. With all that being said, my wife and I take her education and her developmental delays very seriously, which is why I'm standing here before you this evening. Last Thursday, I was notified by a friend that Hollywood Elementary School would be losing one of their special education teachers to another school. And within five minutes, I had written an email to this very board and multiple individuals within the school system administration to get answers. Mind you, I was unaware at the time if it was even my daughter's special education teacher or who was set to, or who was set to be transferred. But what I did know is how tearing a special education student away from one of the most trusted people they have in their very structured environment could be devastating to them. And here, I always thought it was the job of educators to look out for the best interest of their children placed in their care. And I don't believe much thought was put into this teacher's transfer at all, especially in the middle of the year. Now, here, six days with no answers, after emails were sent, phone calls were made, and personal visits to St. Mary's County Public Schools Administration Building here. What I want to know from this board is why a special education teacher would be moved from a school with less than half the school year remaining. Have you done any research as to how this may affect the most vulnerable student population in our system, or how it could exacerbate their issues? While I understand the stress that this pandemic has caused on our already stressed school system, I also understand how a lack of planning can cause things to be much worse than they have to be. I can recall last year that my daughter was left with no speech therapist for over three months because the school system just couldn't find someone. So now, what I expect to hear is about numbers, and how the numbers at Hollywood just don't justify having three special education teachers, and that students there can be serviced by two teachers. Well, my daughter isn't a number at Hollywood. And my answer to you is that, that you should have planned better at the beginning of the year. Any expert would tell you that change is required, if change is required, special education student structure, it must be done slowly and strategically, so not to upset their environment. So tonight, I ask you to rethink these changes and be more concerned about the students' well-being than the numbers. My close friend, family friend, which many of you, whom many of you probably know before her passing, Lynda Dutter once posted a quote that I've never forgotten. When you can't control what's happening, challenge yourself to control the way you respond to what's happening. That's where your power is. So I ask each of you tonight to use the, your power to do the right thing by our students. My daughter, and think about these individuals not as numbers, but as the most vulnerable in the system, you're responsible for nurturing. Thank you for your time, consideration, and I hope to hear answers to my questions very soon. Thank you for your time.
Elaine Deems.
Good evening. My name is Elaine Deems. I'm a special ed care educator at Leonardtown Middle School. I'm also vice president of ESMIC. Tonight, ESMIC would like to say thank you to our school bus drivers. On Monday, our ESMIC board members placed signs at all of our schools around the bus loops in recognition of National Bus Driver Appreciation Day, which was yesterday. We all know that our bus drivers go above and beyond every single day to transport our students safely to and from school each day. But our bus drivers are also the most important interaction our students have at the start of the day and at the end of each of their days. Our drivers are the ones who show extra kindness and reassurance to our littlest pre-K and kindergarten students on their first day of school, or anytime they're upset or scared. Our drivers are some of the best cheerleaders, transporting our student athletes to their away games. Our bus drivers are a critical part of our school system, and our appreciation for them is immeasurable. ESMIC is happy to recognize their hard work and dedication tonight. Thank you very much.
Ms. Page.
I'm another person.
Yes, you are.
I'm sorry, Sharon Page.
Hi, I'm, good evening, members of the board. I'm Sharon Page, and tonight, I am representing ESMIC members as well as other staff. I have a few hats, sometimes I put on, when I, principal calls me in, I have to put on my ESMIC hat, or my nurse hat, or my friend hat, so tonight, I'm ESMIC. Since January 1st, we have had 234 staff members report to be infected with COVID. That is over 10% of our staff being infected in a seven-week period since New Year's. That's 10, over 10%. These people had to stay isolated for five to 10 days, depending upon where they were, we were in the process. Some people got caught when we made the change from 10 days to five, which the five works out as long as we wear our masks. So, they risked work, they had to use their leave days. It's too bad that the COVID virus doesn't cooperate with our rules. COVID still lasts lurking in your body for 14 days, and longer sometimes. Remember, that was the original quarantine. First, it was 14 days, then we went to 10 days, and now we're down to five days of isolation and missing work. We need your help. We need some relief in the form of COVID leave. SMCPS is the only local school system without some form of COVID leave. Maryland state employees have COVID leave. Our St. Mary's County government employees also have COVID leave. Our neighboring counties, Calvert and Charles, have some form of COVID leave. We've heard whispers about COVID leave being in the works. We've heard that we need to hang on, that it's being worked on. What we haven't heard is how we can apply for COVID leave. I know that COVID leave costs funds we don't have. I do have an idea about how we could fund the COVID leave. Of course, this involves our friends, the Board of County Commissioners. They have a rainy day fund. If this is not a rainy day, I don't know what one is. This is not a spring shower, and it's not a blustering fall wind. No, this is a St. Mary's County dog days of August at 3:00 in the afternoon deluge with hail coming down. This is when you pull off the road and hope the ditch doesn't flood. That's the type of day we're having. This pandemic has a virus that does not play by our rules, and it does not follow our calendar. This is our rainy day. I encourage you to ask. It's time to step up and cover your staff with an umbrella called COVID leave. Thank you very much.
Cassandra Kirschenheider.
I will preface with, this is going to be regarding the mask mandate, and I understand you already made your statement earlier, and I appreciate hearing that. However, we've already been going through this for two years, and I am fearful that we still won't stop, and this is, we're going to see this again next year. I'm hoping that what you said earlier with, "We can't let this hold us back anymore, we need to move on," I hope that's true. But, in any event, I'm going to continue to proceed forward. My daughter, she started out, Piney Point Elementary, this school year, in the schools. She was scared with anxiety, mask anxiety, we dealt with it in the school year prior, but we went ahead and we had a conversation. We discussed what it meant to go back to school full-time and not to be at-home learning. She missed her teachers, she wanted to be with her friends, so we went. Within the first month, we had a lot of trouble. She complained constantly, she would get on the bus crying some days, it broke my heart, I couldn't protect her. I work full-time, I work for the government. We work nine, 10-hour days religiously. Being her mom, it hurt me, and homeschooling, it couldn't be my only option. So I fought for her, but she wouldn't listen, she didn't care. The seatbelt sign will stay on until we get out of turbulence, you said. After weekly visits to the nurse and almost daily visits to the school counselor, month two came. We were not any better. She finally called me to her room one night, and through tears, she told me she couldn't do it anymore. She'd had enough, she hated the headaches, she was tired, she hated how unfair it was. Teachers could take theirs down to teach and conveniently would go back to their desk after their lesson plan and still not have their masks back up on their face, and they breathed freely. It wasn't fair. She had anxiety over getting in trouble because she would pull it down to catch fresh air, or to potentially drink from a water bottle. She didn't want to get yelled at, so she asked me to homeschool her. I've never homeschooled, I have no background in any school, I didn't think that I could do it, but she's my daughter, and I have to protect her and help her, so I pulled her from school. The mental exhaustion that I feel right now, I'm broken. I can't do this anymore. I'm working hard, I'm building my own lesson plans, I'm teaching her in between meetings, working evenings and weekends to make up my time lost. But I can't stop, she needs me, because the school system has failed her. The science has evolved, is the story that they spun yesterday while every person backpedals to try to save their reputation, as more and more of this country is fed up, they're pushing back on this mandates. Science has not evolved, it's been the same since day one, masks don't work, people are just waking up. Common sense has gone out the window with this virus, intelligent people have turned to complete idiots, trying to create logic out of nonsense. Can anyone here really tell me you think it makes any sense to walk around a school with a mask, but the moment you sit down for lunch and take it off, COVID magically doesn't exist in that bubble? So while chewing food, you mysteriously can't catch it or transmit it. It makes no sense. While you recognize that the masks are not saving any more lives, it's actually hurting. The psychological damage that's happening to these kids is being brought to light as more and more doctors step out and attest to the increase in mental disorder treatments. They're being suppressed and punished. They're called and embarrassed in front of entire classrooms over a mask, told not to drink so much water because the mask will be down. My son at Spring Ridge, he heard that one. Teacher doesn't want him to drink too much water because his mask is down for too long. Children terrified to put it down for a simple breath, for being feared of punished. But what are we doing? We've allowed these repercussions, we've allowed people to have recess taken away, they're being suspended, this is ludicrous. There's no authority, there's no place that these should be allowed to happen. Every teacher that has done this should be fired, they should be held accountable. This is child abuse, and in Maryland, child abuse is defined as identifiable and substantial impairment of a child's mental or psychological ability to function.
Ma'am, can you wrap up your comment? Your, the three minutes is up.
I know, so was somebody else's, and they continued, I'm wrapping up.
Okay.
My daughter has had to deal with her own mental and psychological issues, this is child abuse, which is why I had to protect her and pull her out. I get it, your hands were tied, and now you're going to make the right decision, come the decision of the AELR Committee, and hopefully, they will make the right decision as well. The entire state has opened up and let them know that. I'm just begging you, please don't let this happen again. This cannot happen again, it has to stop. There need to be laws put in place, there need to be structures put in place to protect our kids. Thank you.
Janice Walthour.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'm Janice Walthour, interim president, again, president again, of the St. Mary's County Branch of the NAACP, and I chair the Education Committee. I'd like to thank Dr. Smith and staff for continuing the partnership they have with us in sponsoring the Southern Maryland College and Career Fair, featuring historically black colleges and universities, local colleges and career opportunities. The NAACP was established in 1909, and we are the oldest civil rights organization in the country. The branch started in 1946 during the era of segregation. The truth, schools for black students were pitiful. A visit to the Drayden One Room Schoolhouse for Black Students, which is now a museum in our county, will show how 45 or more students were cramped in the one little room, and that they started, those students started later in the year because they had to work the fields later than the white students. They started later, and that they, that there actually were no high schools for black students here in the county. So many only got a sixth-grade education if they got that. It's the truth. During this era, students learned the history about the assassination or brutal killing of Abraham Lincoln because he led the effort to save our democracy, freeing many enslaved black men, women, and children that caused the hate-filled Civil War. Our students learn this history today, not to make them feel bad, but to let them know the truth about this history, and the truth about man's humanity, to man or woman, of courses, of course, is not made to make you feel good. The NAACP's focus at that time was on improving the conditions of the one-room and two-room schools for blacks. Our founder, Stephen Young, was Stephen Young, and today, we work to eliminate racism and focus on education. We also work to ensure equity and inclusion in our schools. This month is Black History Month, and we always celebrate education. Nelson Mandela said, "Education is the most powerful weapon we can use to change the world." The theme is black health and wellness. Celebrating this month gives us an opportunity to understand black histories, going beyond stories of racism and slavery to spotlight black achievement, because education is the key to fostering good health and wellness and opportunities to access the great American dream. And really appreciate you all for the safety that you have instilled upon our children to make sure that they're all healthy and, and well. So at the opening of the fair, I inform the students about some graduates, the local high schools, like the Surgeon General, who graduated from Chopticon High School, Jerome Adams. I was proud to boast of Sheriff Joseph Lee Somerville, who graduated from Banneker when it was a segregated school, first African-American in the sheriff in the state of Maryland and in our county, and the sixth in the, in the country. Olympian Tony Hughes, who graduated from Gray Mills High School in 1990, noted track-and-field star. And also, in particular, our teacher, you know, we need more teachers, we need minority teachers, we need men, and our teacher, April Ryan, who was Teacher of the Year from George Washington Carver. Really proud to tell those folks that day about these folks in, in our school system. And also, I was really excited about the first, the students that started the first Black Student Union at Leonardtown High School. Tahia Gaines was the founder, Delia Blackwell, and Camia Somerville, so that was, I was so proud to talk about that. And I shared with them one last thing, about the possibilities of new trade careers, and that is, in-demand electricians, who make at least $56,000, and we need, Smeco needs electricians and linemen, HVAC technicians who make over $50,000, medical assistants who make $38,000-plus, health information technicians who make $45,000-plus, and computer support specialists who make $55,000-plus. And I told them about Morgan State University, where I graduated from, and we just had a lot of information to share and offer those students, so we appreciate your involvement and time. Thank you.
John Singleton.
John Singleton, so I'm a parent of two children in public schools in St. Mary's County. As you can probably tell, I came here, as well as the lady, two people before me, to advocate for the decision to put masks on children to be in the hands of the parents where I believe it belongs. So I appreciate the comments that Dr. Smith made at the beginning of the meeting, and that actually kind of takes, takes the wind out of a lot of the comments I was going to make here to begin with, so I appreciate the position that you've taken, but kind of echoing what she said, it doesn't, in my opinion, change the damage that's been done to children, our children in this community, my children, due to masks. I wanted to quote here from, this is from the American Rescue Plan, Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Funds, this is the plan from the state, the state submitted for the funds, and it kind of makes the case for the money. I'm sure a lot of you've read this. There's a quote in here, sorry, my phone's kind of slow, which I think gives some weight to the argument that the lady, two people before me made. And again, this is a statement made by the state to the federal government in request of funds, sorry, this is so slow. Not getting a good signal. So it says here, "Parents report that they have witnessed a decline in their children's emotional well-being, and that their children are experiencing increased anxiety, depression, and behavioral challenges." Now, I think this was referring more to children being at home, isolated for over a year here in Maryland, in this county, so that's what that's referring to, but kind of echoing what she had said, that the damage continues with the masks, the isolation resulting from children being forced to wear masks, as opposed to having that decision placed in the hands of the parents. And, so on that topic, you know, the same thing she said, I'd like to, you know, we as parents, as a group of us here, try to make sure that this has never happened again. And in support of that, you might be aware, and I'm sure you're aware, that millions of children across the country and different counties and different school districts have been in school. We're in school all last year for over a year while our children were at home, learning at home, isolated, including friends of family, friends and family of my own who were in school all last year, and have been in school all this year without masks, or at least not being forced to wear masks, so they have the option for the parents to make that decision. So there's all that data, you have, you know, two years of data of communities with children who have been in schools with masks optional up to the parents, and communities where children have been in school in person, as opposed to in Maryland, and certainly in this county where they've been isolated at home. So you have that data to look at, and I hope you'll look at that data, and if you can't demonstrate a benefit, and I'm, I would argue you can't, I've looked at it, and you might, you might have your own resources, if you can't demonstrate a benefit, that the damage that's been done to offset, yeah, then, you know, there's no, there's no support for forcing children to wear masks, in my opinion, so. Again, I had a lot of points here that I can't really use, but I hope you'll take into consideration what it said, and what she said, and put that decision in the hands of the parents. Otherwise, in my opinion, if you make that decision yourselves, you also shift the responsibility to yourselves for the damage that's done. When you make that decision yourselves, as opposed to putting it in our hands as parents where it should be, in my opinion. So thank you very much, and I hope you'll consider that. Appreciate it.
Thank you. I have a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
I move approval of the consent agenda, which today consists of the approval of minutes of February 9th, 2022, personnel, teachers, there are no administrator and supervisory appointments, the contract for installation of the security window film, and the 2022-2023 Board of Education meeting schedule.
May I have a second?
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the motion is carried, and we have one action item this morning, which is the gymnasium floor replacement, or refurbishment, excuse me, not replacement, Mr. Whitton.
Don't want to spend more money.
That's just refurbished, that's not replaced.
And, how's everyone this evening?
Doing well, how are you?
Good, good, like to see a lot of people in here this evening, it was nice. This evening, I'm here with, for the gymnasium floor refurbishment. I'm here to request approval to use the Baltimore County Public Schools contract, JMI 61018, for wood floor refinishing, replacement repairs, relining services on an as-needed basis. The SMCPS Comprehensive Maintenance Plan for Educational Facilities includes a program for refurbishing wood floors every 12 years, or as conditions dictate. The current condition, the current refurbishment is planned for every 12 years, and what that accounts for is basically being able to take a new wood floor and go over it three to four times in its complete life before you go into complete replacement. With that said, we do end up replacing a lot of wood at the, in the bottom of the key under the basket each time. Our current schedule for gymnasium floor refurbishment includes Chopticon and Gray Mills High School gym floor, and FY23, and Esperanza Middle School, and Park Hall Elementary School, and FY24. If you're curious about our wood floor gym, gym floor inventory, I put it up there real quick, we have five elementary schools, some of them used to be high schools, some of them used to be middle schools, four middle schools, and of course, all three high schools. This summer, we plan to refinish Chopticon and Gray Mills High School. These schools were last refinished in 2008, 2009 respectively. They're due, and to give you an idea of what they're going to look like when they're done, there's Chopticon, they're going to switch up their colors a little bit, it'll be a lighter finish. If you've seen gray, I mean, sorry, if you've seen Leonardtown High School since last summer, the new ceilings are water-based, so they tend to be brighter. They don't, they don't, they don't tan, well, tint as, as bad over time either, they don't get a, the clarity doesn't go away through there, so they don't darken, or, some people call it yellowing or browning or what have you. And then, Gray Mills High School, they changed up theirs, too. They got a different kind of Hornet. Gray Mills GMHS is at the baseline on the foul line, and the Hornets are bright yellow, changed up some activity numbering and things around the outside, and that'll definitely brighten that gym up. The contract, JMI 61018, was awarded to Miller Flooring Company of Westchester, Pennsylvania, and Mastercraft Flooring of Baltimore, Maryland, on April 17th of 18. The contract is valid through April 30 of '23. SMCPS estimates the annual use of this contract up to 200,000. We do use this for gymnasium floors, we also use it for some stage repairs, because they are also the same sort of wood floor. SMCPS has worked with Miller Flooring Company and Mastercraft Flooring previously on wood flooring replacements, refurbishments, and repairs. Our board policy, DJC and DJCR, encourages the use of cooperative contracts established by other agencies providing public bidding procurement was followed. Cooperative purchasing contracts are permitted by Maryland state law and the Annotated Code of Maryland, fiscal and procurement, Article 13110. And with that, if you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer, but I asked the board to approve that item.
I have no questions, but since Leonardtown's gym was just refurbished, and our turf fields are being, like, being, what is it called, implemented right now?
Installed right now.
Thank you. All of our facilities are like, basically new, this is really exciting.
It's your part of gift duty.
Yeah.
No questions.
Um, I don't have any questions, thank you.
Thank you.
No questions. Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve the use of Baltimore County Public Schools contract, JMI 61018, with Miller Flooring Contract, JMI six-ten-eighteen, with Miller Flooring Company and Mastercare Flooring to provide wood flooring services on an as-needed basis and as funding permits throughout the duration of the contract, which is valid through April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a great evening.
You, too.
You, too.
All right, let's see, we have a few informational items. The first one is Ms. Dellenhut with African American History Month. If you wouldn't, oh, there you are.
Yep, there I am.
Good evening.
How are you?
Good.
Good evening, everyone. It's an honor to be here again. And just to celebrate African American History Month, let me go ahead. I know I have to drive here. Here we go. I think I need help driving here. Thank you. Oh, thank you very much. Always appreciate the help. Thank you so much. All right. All right, so. Okay, I'll start talking. All right, there we go. Anyway, I'm here to celebrate African American History Month, the celebrations, activities, and programs that are highlighted throughout the year from our students and staff. And so African American History Month is also known as Black History Month, and it's an annual celebration, as we know, of the achievements of African Americans, achievements of African Americans for a time to recognize their central role in history. And even though we celebrate the achievements of African Americans all year long, throughout the history, it is designated a national recognition, and that's because of Dr. Carter G. Woodson, who created the observance in February of nineteen-twenty-six. And since nineteen-seventy-six, each U.S. President has officially designated the month to celebrate.
Change your batteries real quick, because I think that's what's going on.
Designated the month to celebrate African American History Month, and even other countries have designated a month to Black History, Canada and United Kingdom as well. So our students and staff, we continue to celebrate equality, and we continue to celebrate freedom. Thank you. And, there we go. And the history of African Americans and all peoples and all cultures throughout the year. So we do this by writing biographical essays. We do this by reading biographies, or books, or stories, or poems. We also do this by developing artwork and design. We saw some amazing artwork and design just a few minutes ago. Researching prominent historical figures, and even inviting guest readers and speakers into our schools. And so during this presentation, what I will do is highlight just a few of the many school activities and programs that celebrate, are celebrating African American History Month. All right, so we have Greenview Knowles Elementary School, and these teachers designed a NearPod interactive classroom lesson using books by African American authors. And they're using this within the Schoology platform. And the NearPod is an online tool that is accessed through that Schoology platform to help create interactive lessons and resources for the students. Fourth grade writing groups, if you noticed, they're reading biographies about famous African Americans, and then they've written paragraphs about how each of these individuals is influential in African American history. And at Park Hall Elementary School, they've dedicated a bulletin board to showcase and acknowledge African Americans' leaders in history. And in our middle schools, Spring Ridge Middle School and Leonard Town Middle School Media Specialists have digital libraries in Schoology for students to virtually access books for Black History. And Margaret Brent Middle School has dedicated their school showcase to acknowledging African American books and leaders in history. Esperanza Middle School, their diversity equity leadership team has developed Black History Month writing prompts for teachers to share with their students, and then those students, the prompts are featured in their weekly smore. And Spring Ridge Middle School each year participates in the National Council of Teachers of English African American Read-In. And what this is, is having people in the community, leaders in the community, and leaders in the school system come in and read to the students, read books of poems, historical accounts, biographies, just all of that about African American history, African American literature, and that's to promote literacy. And also in our high schools, in our high schools, we have continued that tradition of the African American Read-In, so they are also participating. Great Mills High School is participating, as well as Leonard Town High School, their freshman academy. At the Dr. James A. Forrest and Technology Center, students have written biographical essays and created historical reports of prominent African American figures, and they've dedicated bulletin boards to showcase the students' work. And Chopticon also has a bulletin board display that's highlighting African Americans, famous African American leaders in history. Each year, we have an opportunity to partner with our St. Mary's County NAACP and provide a valuable service for our students. And the annual Historically Black Colleges and Universities, HBCUs, College and Career Fair started in February of twenty-twelve. And we, SMCPS, has been in partnership with them since twenty-seventeen. And one of the goals is to bring HBCUs and various career organizations to St. Mary's County Public Schools, our students, so that our students and parents have access to the educational opportunities these organizations provide. So this fair is not just for the eleventh and twelfth graders. Of course, it's for them, but not only for them, it is for our first-generation college students. It is for our transfer students, and it's for our middle school students as well throughout the community. And our students have the opportunity to meet with the recruiters, the career organizers, and also some of our local colleges, to name a, to name a few. St. Mary's College of Maryland, College of Southern Maryland, Armed Forces as well, her opportunities. And before the pandemic, with an average of four hundred attendees per year, the fair has brought over a hundred colleges and career organizations. They've offered over one hundred on-the-spot acceptances and over eighty thousand dollars worth of scholarships. And so this year, the two thousand twenty-two HBCU Fair was held virtually this past Saturday, that's February nineteenth, and we had about two-hundred and ten participants overall. That includes a hundred and fifty-four attendees, and fifty-six exhibitors, presenters, and committee members of the college fair. So out of that one hundred and fifty-four attendees, there were forty-nine SMCPS students, ninety other students across the county, I'm sorry, tri-county area, and a few of our general attendees, which would include some of our parents. It could be a community, other community members, community organization leaders. And so some of the high points were that the students were able to not only visit the booths, the virtual booths, and get a chance to connect in with those organizations, they had opportunity for twelve sessions, and I'm not going to name them all, but it's including college administration testing, college transition planning for students with IEP and five-oh-fours, careers in teaching, NCAA requirements for student athletes, college and career live Q and A sessions, which featured community leaders that share their experiences about, and their reasons for why they chose either an HBCU, or they chose a career after high school, or they may have chosen the military. So that platform provided multiple opportunities for engagement for our students. And as you see on the screen, this is, this is the list of participating organizations. All right, so this is a really unique opportunity for our students to experience access to a wide variety of colleges and career organizations, and enable them to have better choices about their post-secondary academic life. And this concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to take any questions at this time, if you have them.
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Since you were doing it virtually, did you have success, like, reaching out, like, to others? I see a couple other states here, but, you know, to be able to get more historically black colleges to participate?
Yes, with the pandemic, I mean, before, it was a little bit easier to, you know, get people to come in, but with the pandemic, we have, you know, you know, had a little bit of an issue with that. However, you know, we still have our career organizations, and, you know, we still have our local colleges that were there, and we had a lot of information, as I mentioned, the sessions as well, so.
Okay, because I know, like, Norfolk State, like, I didn't see their name on there, but they might have participated.
Interesting you mentioned Norfolk State. They have been participating for the last nine years. This is the first year they did not participate, and there was a reason for that. So it's interesting you brought them up, but yes.
All right, thank you.
I think it's great. I'm hopeful, fingers crossed, next year you can go back to in-person. I think, you know, attending the college fairs in the past years, they've been very well-attended, and I think the students and the parents get a lot out of them. Everything is more difficult over Zoom and virtual, you know, you've got connection issues, you have people who, you know, aren't familiar with it, so, you know, hats off for the, for the level that you did have in participation, because I'm sure it was, you know, a tug to, you know, to get that, and it was a heavy lift. So hopefully, fingers crossed, you know, next year is easier, so.
I want to thank you for the partnership and all the people that work for you to make this successful over a number of years that the school systems and other organizations have joined in. I attended it last year when it was virtual. I think it was very well-done. And for people who have issues with transportation, they could do it from the comfort of their home, and they could get their questions answered, they could go to breakout sessions, they could talk to the different career organizations, and that part was really great, because they had people from different areas, like the Maryland State Police, the Sheriff's Department, SMACCO, the Health Department, and they could get information right there. They could talk to about what are the requirements to get a job there, and education benefits that that particular job may offer to them. So I think it was excellent for that. And historically, black colleges and universities are open to all students, and not just African American students, but all students. And the College and Career Fair is for all students. All students can attend. So I have enjoyed it each year that I have attended, and I've taken lots of photographs, and it's packed. You know, the college portion is excellent, but also the career portion, and that's a major portion of it. Students who may not want to go to college right away, but may want a job, they can talk to somebody right there who's in the particular field and tell them, you know, this is what you need to do. The different branches of the military have been there, so it's very well-done, and this partnership is excellent to give our students many opportunities and many pathways to post-secondary education or career opportunities. And many of these opportunities are right here in the county.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm pleased that you continue to have such a robust program. And while, you know, throughout the pandemic, nothing has been ideal in any way, shape, or form, I have to say, I'm glad you've been able to do it in person, because there is something about being able to talk to someone, look in their eyes directly, and make those connections that may perhaps encourage a student who might not normally have applied to a particular school, if they feel that connection, that may sway them in deciding that that might be the place for them. So thank you for continuing to persevere and to, to offer this to so many students. I'm really pleased. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we completely hijacked the whole African History Month with, with everything on the, on the Career Fair, but thank you to you and your team, you know, for helping all of the schools celebrate, you know, at the various levels. And I think from what you've shown us, I think that the, you know, the lessons were appropriate for the various levels of, you know, of students that we had. So, you know, thank you for all that work as well. So I don't want to just wipe all that out.
And I do want to note, and for the numbers, what we realized, and we went back with the data yesterday evening, because we were at a committee meeting, that there were several students that were on with their brothers and their siblings or their parents. So really, the numbers were probably a lot more than we thought, and that's just an aha moment. And the other thing is that if you are already registered or have been registered, and registration is still open, and the reason it's still open is you can go in and still access the information, you can watch all of the recorded sessions. They, they were live on that day, but now they are recorded, and you can go back into those booths and access the information for up to three months.
Excellent. That is very good. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have Chesapeake Public Charter School. Ms. Funya. Nauman, who else? Ms. Wagner. Thank you. While I get this up, I do want to congratulate Judy on getting into her college of choice she shared with me in November, that she was expecting, and tonight she shared that with us. So congratulations.
Thank you.
I wanted to be known, I did not touch the computer tonight.
No, I didn't have control of this cursor somewhere.
I didn't, I, Dr. Mark completely took, I mean, I didn't touch it. There we go.
Now it's very sensitive, because the batteries are very, very fresh.
We're doing great.
Good evening. Joining me this evening are Ms. Angela Funya, the Chesapeake Public Charter School Director, and Ms. Mary Beth Nauman, Chairperson of the Chesapeake Charter School Alliance. We are here tonight to share with you the school's annual update, which is a requirement of Section Four of the Contract between St. Mary's County Public Schools and the Chesapeake Public Charter School Alliance. Most years, this update contains lots of assessment data, information, and comparisons, which has been shared with you throughout the year. We still have very little of this information available. The MCAP administration was canceled in spring of two thousand nineteen, and reinstated this fall for select students in select courses and in abbreviated forms. Therefore, tonight's report will contain less assessment information than has been in their traditional presentation. My role with the charter school is to act as a liaison between the school system and the school. Ms. Funya and I meet each week to support the needs of the school and also to learn from one another. We are fortunate that CPCs continues to be a thriving school community. At this time, I'm going to pass the presentation over to Ms. Nauman.
Great, thank you. First of all, I want to say, I'm going to go a little off-script here, which I know always makes Ange a little nervous, but this is my fifth year on the board, and I have to say, being educated in these types of relationships between charter schools and the Board of Education, it's wonderful to see the. the Board of Education, it's wonderful to see the partnership that's here, because as I've come to understand over these many years, sometimes that's not always so wonderful in other areas. So I certainly appreciate the amount of respect and helpfulness that you have provided us and support that you've provided us, so thank you for that. As talked about, we are here basically to report out to you and to share with you some of our accomplishments. One of those is our facility, as you know, that's owned by us, the Chesapeake Charter School Alliance. We did receive some ester funding, and we're looking at the best way to use that funding for the air quality of deciding what is best with, in our school system. And in addition to that, there's renovations that are also to expand out. As you know, we are expanding from two classes to three classes per grade level. We've got two more grades to go, which is actually, my daughter's in that sixth grade class that's going into seventh and eighth grade, so I follow that very closely, and it's one of the reasons why my daughter got in, so it's a little near and dear to my heart for those renovations to include that. In addition to that, as Ms. Bachner has shared, there's a wonderful partnership that has happened, and I also have to commend Ms. Bachner on embracing this partnership and has really been dedicated to understanding how we work and has made great strides in understanding the charter schools as well. So thank you for that, we certainly appreciate that. In addition to that, we do have a board, Chesapeake Charter School Alliance Board, we do meet monthly. We also just started the implementation plan, it's a three-year implementation plan, so we're very excited about that as well. And you also know about some of the changes that we're making to our organizational structure, so lots going on. In regards to our financial audit, we do this every year, that's for the financial period ending in June 30 of 2021, we provide that communication back to the board, and with that, the report of no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses.
And I do want to interject that there was not a communication update with that this year, but it has been added as an attachment for this board meeting.
We also do our own fundraising, and a lot of that is made to be able to make up for the owning and the operating of the facility, because there's a lot that is included in that. To date, we are at about 43,000. We were really able to pivot nicely to a lot of the virtual things that we needed to in order to be successful, including some of the things that you see here, the virtual auctions, passive fundraisers. We do have a direct appeal, lots of support, not only from the parents that have students at the school, but also then from community members too, which is wonderful. And in addition to that, we do try to have community events that are also fundraisers, including our Fall Walk. And with that, I'll hand it over to Ms. Funia.
Great, thank you. So we're excited that year 15 for us got to start with all of the kids in person at school, so that was an amazing way to start our 15th year. As Ms. Bachner had shared, we are, you know, kind of dipping our toes back into the world of the formal assessments. We did take the early fall session with our students and have been grateful to have some of that information in order to help us diagnostically plan for the instruction as we move through the course of this year. You can go ahead to the next slide. Just to kind of recap, last year, that was our final enrollment demographic that you see there, we were 480 students, grades K through eight, as Ms. Nauman had shared, we're kind of pushing up that fifth grade class last year. This year, we're moving that up to the sixth grade, and that will continue on in the next two years to seventh and eighth grade, where we will be fully built out at 540 students. Currently, we're sitting at 500 students. You can see that number of the economically disadvantaged, that's the number that we keep trying to push forward, but as we all know, with all students receiving free meals, it's really difficult to use that as a data point. But we're excited to see that the data that we do have continues to show that trend of moving upward, which is why we had waited the lottery, and that's the direction that we want to continue to go. And as you can see there, the rest of our demographics do mirror that of St. Mary's County Public Schools as a whole.
I have a question. What is EL?
English Language.
Yes.
Okay, so this is that time of year where we are inviting new people into our school. Our admissions process begins in November, and thank you so much for the shout-out this year to help get that word out to our community. We have three parent information sessions in December. We had two in-person this year, so that was also, again, an exciting way to bring the community back into our building. We also held one virtually, just to make sure that we are kind of hitting all of the bases that we needed to. We do continuous outreach through our community throughout the course of the year, but my colleagues in the Title I schools and Head Start and pre-K programs are kind enough to share all of the information that a parent would need in order to apply to our school to their communities on our behalf, which is fabulous. In addition to that, we are putting information out into private preschools, daycares, libraries, businesses, social media, online, anywhere that we possibly can, just to make sure that people realize that we exist in our community, that we're a public school, there's no tuition, it's a choice-based program that you have the opportunity to apply for just because you live in St. Mary's County. So we did our open enrollment, we also do the declaration of intent at that same time, because that helps us to know, based on our families that are currently with us, how many kindergarten siblings would be applying to come for the following year, as well as our staff, because as you know, with our lottery, those students have a preference. We had 390 new applicants this year, that was a little bit higher than last year, where we were sitting at about 330 applicants, which was great. Out of those 390 applicants, 26% of them self-reported that they were economically disadvantaged and wanted to take advantage of that priority in our lottery. 29% of the applicants in total were for the kindergarten class, where we had 22 open seats. Generally, the question gets asked too, like, what's it like in the other grade levels? Typically, the next spike that I'll see is in that sixth grade pool, where we had about 10% of the applicants. And as always, I'd like to tell you where they're coming from, so this is the top five zip codes that apply to us in general. It kind of sits right around that area where we are, with Lexington Park, California, and Great Mills, with a few outliers up in Lenartown and Mechanicsville, and the other is anybody who came in, you know, under 4%. So many, many places represented in our community. This is the first year, based on kind of some feedback that we had been given about transparency. Okay, who applies to your lottery? What does that look like with respect to the breakdown? Are you, you know, how does it work out, this is who applied, and this is who has been accepted? So this was just a nice little correlation where you can see that it's pretty right on track with the applicants that are reporting in, the number of students who are then accepted within that demographic. So as always, it's self-reported, and some people prefer not to give us that information, but we thought this would be a nice visual for people in order to understand that. And then, moving forward for our next school year, as I said, we're up to 520 students. You know that we're considering a little bit of a change in our organizational structure based on the strategic planning that we had been working on this past year. This is part of our three-year plan, our three-year implementation plan, to add the additional admin staff. When we looked at it and we benchmarked it, and the last time we added admin to our school, our growing school, was in 2015, where we brought in a second academic dean. Since that time, we've brought in 200 students and no additional administrative support. So we really felt that and recognized that that's a huge part of being able to sustain our organization, is to make sure that, you know, we've got an appropriate ratio of administration to the number of students we have in our school. In addition to that, we're going to reclassify our academic deans from 11 months to 12 months, because being a year-round school, we really need them in the summer to help prepare professional development, to take a look closely at that academic data that we have, and make instructional decisions for the upcoming year, kind of prior to the rest of the school system getting started. So it's just really a timing issue that we needed to address as well. And then we're looking at, of course, with our additional class, an additional middle school staff member. And so that's just a little of what we've got in store for us for the next year, and we're happy to answer any questions that you may have.
For the 2021 to 2022 school year, is this the largest population of students you've had in the history of your, of Chesapeake Charter School?
For this?
Yeah, you have 500 students. Last year, this was 80, so this is the greatest amount of students.
Yes, we started with 160 15 years ago, and worked our way up to 500 last year, 520 next year.
Do you expect that the numbers will grow significantly more in the next coming year, or do you think you'll cap the population?
We'll cap our population, that's part of our charter agreement with St. Mary's County Public Schools, is that we keep our class sizes capped at about 20 students in order to kind of provide the educational programming that we offer. We recognize that that's a really critical piece, so we'll cap it at 20, and when we're fully built out, it should be 540 kids.
Okay, thank you so much.
It is so great to see how you're progressing and the things that you're developing and how you're moving along. Did you have difficulty reaching out this year to, you know, parents and people that might be interested in coming to the charter school?
It was a little easier this year than it was last year.
Okay.
A little more prepared, for sure.
Okay, go ahead.
We do have a communications committee, so they helped us greatly in terms of figuring out those places to get the word out there. And then one of the things that I wanted to add to, even with the last presentation about having to do these virtual things, one of the nice things is, we were able to record that, so that then we had it available for people to watch if they weren't available for the actual in-person. So that is a nice thing to be able to say, hey, go to our website, and you can still, even if you weren't able to make it, find out all of the information by attending the virtual one, or by actually just watching it after it's been recorded. So it does, you know, while there's, you know, there's shiny parts to this as well, and I find out to be one of them, that we are able to record some of these things to be used later, so.
Do you think you're going to, even if you go back to physically going to places, like I know like the library and things like that, do you think that you'll also do like a recorded or taped?
Yeah, I do. I really think that's been helpful, especially for people that work, or you know, you said yourself, oh, I'm going to go, and then, you know, the night gets away from you and it makes it difficult. It just creates another opportunity for people to listen, or if transportation is an issue, you don't have a way to get there, people are able to understand it even if they are in those situations.
Okay, great, thank you.
Sure.
My only question was actually on your financials, your accounts receivable jumped up from, like 60 to, from what, 59,000?
Yep.
So the footnote just says that it's for grants that you have applied for but haven't received, so what, I guess, what's the timeline? Like, do you expect to receive that, like, and put that money to use, or with the grant not, money not coming in, is that putting you behind on any of your plans?
It's not putting us behind, that was actually the tail end of the MSDE grant that was being paid out. I don't know if you recall, but we had a three-year, we were gracious enough to receive this three-year grant, so that was the payout of that.
Okay.
And so it was on the tail end of that, the invoices were submitted, and we did finally receive the funding for that in this fiscal year, so that's, but that's why that's reflected that way.
So basically, what, sitting on your balance sheet was just a timing thing?
That's exactly right, yeah.
At the time you closed books.
And I think you'll see, it's also being spent as well, so.
Right, I just, right, just, right, with the jump up, I didn't know if that was going to impact any of your build-out or anything along this line.
No, yeah, I think we should be, I think we'll be okay there.
Okay.
So we fit within the confines of the restrictions for the grant, too, to get it paid out in time, so.
All right, thank you.
Thanks for us.
I want to thank you for your success. I remember when this first started, and you are still in existence, and you are still successful. I am sure you one of the longest charter schools in the state of Maryland.
Certainly the best.
Well, I definitely agree with that 100%. They are the best, and I knew you would be successful in the beginning, and you're still here, and I'm very proud of you, and I know you're just going to even do greater things. So thank you for that, and you are shining light here in SMCPS.
Well, thank you, and a lot of that, again, is because of the support, you know, and that partnership that we have, so thank you, and thank you for always supporting us.
Thank you.
I think it also goes to the fact that you are open to working together to make this successful, you know, hearing from board members elsewhere. You're correct, the relationship is not always a positive one, and you get different, you hear different things about why that is, but I do think that it has, you know, been a wonderful addition to the county and the opportunities that are available for students. Do appreciate that you continue to work to increase the minority participation in the school and for those students to be retained. So that is, you know, certainly has always been very important for us, and appreciate all of your efforts in making that happen.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
Last item is Dr. Mar, Rising Freshman Orientation Night.
We sort of started with that when Judy shared what SLAC has been doing.
The Alpha, the Omega, the beginning and the end, we always try to wrap it together as a wonderful wheel of moving forward.
Yeah, so I feel like I'm bookending this board meeting. I started with a recognition, ending with a commercial.
Yes.
So this is a commercial, if you will, for our Rising Freshmen Orientation. We are glad to bring these back in-person. Actually, the last time we held them in-person was the very beginning of this pandemic, so it is, it is fitting that as we come out of this, we're bringing this program back. And so the first is going to be March 7 at Chopticon, then followed by March 8 at Great Mills, and March 9 at Lenartown. Each of them will begin at 6 o'clock. And the purpose of these sessions is to provide all of our rising freshmen with an overview of what to expect as they enter high school. We know that there's a lot of nervousness, there's a lot of planning that takes place, a lot of thinking about what courses they will take, and we want to explain to them what they should expect, and also how they should be thinking about their course of study as they go into high school to plan for the courses they need to graduate. And so in doing so, well, first thing we'll do is we'll start out by bringing them into the auditorium and having a presentation. Dr. Smith will share some words. I, of course, love a stage, so I will be there. And then, of course, as Judy referenced, she and the students in the Superintendent Student Leadership Advisory Council from each of the schools will present perspectives from current students. And we found, we started that a few years ago, and it was a really nice way to connect incoming students with those who have lived and breathed in a high school for the last few years, and they share their experiences. So Judy, thank you to you and your peers for being part of that. We'll go over all of the high school graduation requirements, and as you've seen in your presentations, they have evolved over time, and so we keep people up to date with those. They'll have also opportunities to attend breakout sessions on our various academies, including our new freshman academy at each of our high schools, the virtual academy, fairly disconnected with that freshman academy in terms of a connecting thread of purpose. They also have opportunities to go into sessions on general studies, so even if they're not interested in an academy, they can spend some time with counselors and talking about what they should be thinking about and planning. And then each school also offers a variety of specific personalized elements of their own school as well. Now, it's important to tell our families, too, that if they can't make the, one of the nights for their particular school that they're scheduled to go to, they can go to any of the nights. All the information will be consistently presented, so they can attend any of the three nights, or they can go on our website, smcps.org, go to the Students tab, and we have a Rising Freshman Orientation button, where we'll be warehousing all of the information that is shared for our families there. In addition, students and families can go to our Schools tab and go to each one of our high school pages and learn about them. There's a ton of information at each school's website, including all of the pathways that will be featured as well. And then finally, we have an email address, so if your question is not answered at the session, or you just walk away and say, oh, and I also thought of this, there's a Class of 2026 email that goes to a group of us here that we can respond to and provide information to our students and families. So we are excited to see our incoming ninth graders, and we welcome them and their families. And this also, just since this is a public presentation, we also want to share that our students in our non-public feeder schools are also welcome to attend too, because they may have interest in attending the high school, the public high school, or those that are currently on homeschool programs too, so they're all welcome. So with that, I conclude my presentation and open it up for any questions.
Mary, have any questions?
No questions, but I'll be there for most of the nights.
Yes, you will.
Yeah, so you'll see me there, and I'll be plugging some clubs, so join NHS, join Student Government, wonderful clubs.
Yeah, so you'll see me there and I'll be plugging some clubs. So join NHS, join Student Government. Wonderful clubs.
No questions.
Mary?
Thank you. This is a very colorful presentation and is very well done. Thank you so much.
For the students, the rising ninth graders who may choose to attend the Virtual Academy, how would you advise them in terms of participating in or seeing the Rising Freshmen Orientation?
Well, they're welcome to, we will have a breakout session on the Virtual Academy too so they can come in person to have those questions answered. And if they, again, we'll be posting the information and any of the flyers or other information packets on that Rising Freshmen site. So if they can't come, they can certainly tune in virtually to the information that is posted. We're also creating a short video, like we do for all of our other programs. It's almost in the can right now for our Virtual Academy and that will be posted as well, not only on the Google site, but also on our YouTube channel as well. And then, of course, if they still don't have their answers, email the Class of 2026 and we'll make sure the question gets to the right person.
Great, thank you. That's all.
Okay. Scott, do you have any closing remarks on Rising Freshmen Night?
No, I'm going to save all of my remarks for Rising Freshmen Night so you have to go there in person and see the presentation.
All right, we'll have to gauge your remarks at that point.
As is often the case.
All right, let's see. Our next meeting is Wednesday, March 6, no, Wednesday, March 9 at 8:00 a.m. So we will see everyone then and with that, we are adjourned.